This time I would ask that you stand and we'll have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to leave there.
Good evening, Lord, and we just ask that you bless this meeting, bless all the conversations held here. Father, we thank you for each and every individual that's came here tonight. Father, we just ask that you guide us in this meeting and direct us to keep us safe on our travel time. We ask all these things in your precious Son, Jesus, nice and amen.
Amen.
Join me with prayer. The United States of America, and the people of this land, one nation under God, in the One God, with liberty and justice for all.
Time the chair is going to recognize Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, roll call.
Mr. Granberry?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Blakeney-Chip?
Here.
And Mr. White?
Here.
All present.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to suspend the rules if I could, please, sir. And what I would like to do on our agenda is add an 11G, please. For those of you that are listening, you'll have to flip over to that page. And this will be Resolution 2018-8. And I'll let the mayor, and I'll speak on it at that time, too, but it's indirect affiliation with our consideration of becoming a municipal planning commission versus a region.
You should have that resolution in front of you, 2018-8, regarding going to the state legislature in support of allowing us to have our own design guidelines here in Mount Pleasant. The local cities are doing the same thing and going to the state legislature asking for their support on that.
And I'd like to suspend those rules and add that place to 11G.
Motion been duly made, the second.
Second.
You're the seconded, all in favor of signature, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rules are suspended, that item's out of the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item four is approval correction of amendments from prior meetings of February 20, 2018. If you have those before you, are there any corrections or additions or comments?
I saw them, Mayor. I move for approval.
For approval, the second. You're the seconded, all in favor of signature, saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, that's passed by the board. Item five, awards, presentations, appointments, proclamations, are you on? Just give those, please.
Mayor, Commissioners, in your package you've had proclamations that have been given out over the past week or so. Three Eagle Scouts, Christian Corbin, Benjamin Hatcher, and Deuce Daniel Trammell. And then, over the weekend, the mayor was so gracious to come in on Saturday to give Deborah Jean Gullidge a proclamation because of her continued studies as a getting a full scholarship to graduate school in physics, and she's a Mount Pleasant graduate. So, we'll have more of that in our monthly report, but since these proclamations are approved by the commission, we always want to put them in front of you, obviously. And you have all of them in your package as well.
For those of you who don't know, and I didn't know this young lady, Deborah Jean Gullidge, 23 years old, built up on the corner of Haylong here and just left the street. She is graduating from Austin P. with a degree in astrophysics. Some might listen to me and say, "I don't know what astrophysics encompasses," but it's a very, it sounds real hard, and I'm sure it is, but she has been offered a fantastic opportunity to go to the Bonn Cologne Graduate School in Germany and study physics and astronomy. And she's the first student in the United States of America, male or female, to get this honor. Tremendous honor for her, her family, and tremendous honor for the city of Mount Pleasant. She graduated, salute, John, from Mount Pleasant High School in 2013. It's just fantastic. She's got the students and mom who live up there. Really fine people. We appreciate it very much. Item six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting. Item A, orders 2018-1017, a public hearing, final reading on ordinance to amend Title III, Chapter II, Court Administration of Municipal Code of the City of Mount Pleasant by repealing and replacing section 3-202 relating to imposition of fine penalties and costs.
Mayor and Commissioners, as we talked about on first reading, this is amending and getting our court clause up to date. Since the first reading, the only thing that has been changed is we have removed the head trauma injury fee as a result of MTS recommending that we remove that. And I also wanted to let you know that your Schedule A was incorrect and that it was missing the top salary. It's all corrected. The bottom line was always the same, but want to make sure that you knew the attachment that you had that we sent out the last go around was missing a line at it. So, it's all corrected at this point. Any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
No questions.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
You're the seconded. This is a public hearing. Has anyone in this audience choose to speak for or against this particular ordinance? My look record shows that no one is present to speak for or against this. Any further discussion? All in favor of signature by a saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, that's passed by the board. Item B, orders 2018-1018, public hearing slash final reading and ordinance repealing and replacing Title VII, Chapter VI of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to sale and use of fireworks between the corporate city limits of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Mayor, Commissioners, we've gone through this on first reading. The only change that's been made between the first reading and the second reading is we've added the requirement that retailers are to provide flyers that to anyone they sell fireworks to, that explains what the rules are, and violation of the rules can result in a citation. So, the way this is written right now, the fireworks can be sold between June 20th and July 5th, and they are allowed to be used June 20th through July 5th, including up to 12:30 a.m. on July 5th, and on December 31st from 10 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. the following day. I believe that's everything that everybody discussed. If I'm missing anything, we're happy to answer any questions.
Have the motion, please, and we'll have the public allow to speak.
Again, is this a public hearing issue, though?
Motion to accept this, proceed.
Motion to accept, to approve this ordinance, is it seconded?
Seconded.
You're the seconded. Any comments from the audience about the fireworks ordinance? I'm going to encourage all of you that live in the city of Mount Pleasant, we haven't changed very, very little of what our existing ordinance was. If you have a problem this year, July primarily, please call City Hall. Don't call me, call City Hall. You call me, too, that'd be all right. Columbia has changed their ordinance drastically, and I expect us to have some more activity down here than we had, and I got enough comments last year for the rest of my term. I'm not against fireworks, I'm not against children, I'm not shocked as much fireworks as anybody ever shot. But we got a little out of control last year, and several people want something done about it, and we had an opportunity, and I voted for it the way it is, but it couldn't get changed. So, just do call and report it if you seem new, because we can look at it, and that was kind of the end of things, we will review it each year. And something comes up and it gets out of hand because of sales on the south end of Lawrence County and the lack of sales on the north end with Murray County, we may need to tweak that sometime.
Mayor, also, you know, the people selling are going to have this new, the hours and that posted visually, so they won't have, people won't have any use for not, if they're buying, I'm not having seen. Of course, they'll say they didn't know, but...
Anyone else? No one has a comment? Okay. Record shows that there's no comment from the general public, and at this time we will have a vote on this, please. All in favor of signature by a saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, aye vote, and when 2018, 018 gets passed. Item seven, monthly report from the mayor, due to lack of time and strain, I'm going to, I'll have it stated right on the report. Item eight, monthly financial slash budget report, quarter, please.
Good evening. I think you have the full report in your packet. I do know that one of them didn't go through right, so if you find that something doesn't quite right when you pull it up on your laptop, just give me a call and I'll be sure to make a resend it or get you a hard copy of those reports, because they are quite lengthy. February was the last collection month of current taxes. I have a report that we've all, that we're, taxes were actually slightly over budget for collections, and that's a good place to be over budget, it's revenues. However, we do have to turn around and repay UST for this tip agreement. As much as it pains me to write that check to them, the net result is positive for both the, especially the schools and the city. As we're able to keep 5%, basically what that means is that a piece of priority that was under the green belt that got, that we, prior to UST, we received $400, we now get $20,000. So, that is a pretty good return.
And then about three to four years, we'll get quite a bit more. They paid it in error, that UST did, and so we had to pay that.
Actually, they have to pay us, and then we have to pay the industrial development board.
Return it, yeah. That's all been taken care of.
That has already been taken care of. It was done first of March, but we did book that as a payable. So, if you notice that extra, that large payable in the reports, we did book that February because we received the money from UST in February, so we wanted to make sure they were reported in the same month. The, as far as the overall picture, we are at 71% of expenditures, which is about where we should be at this point in the budget year. We do anticipate next month being a little higher because we will be cutting off purchase orders before long, and each department has already been instructed to start looking at their final purchases in their budget year. We do that to give us time to, for the vendors to get, first of all, to get the items, the items that get billed and paid before the June 30th deadline. By cutting off those purchase orders, we used to cut them off in May, first part of May, we started getting the, pretty much the planned purchases, trying to get them finalized here toward the end of the year. Cash balances, again, were higher this month due to the collection of property taxes. The general fund, the cash and checks and balances total over 2.1 million. The water operating account was $985,000. The gas fund checking and savings, and of course, these do exclude the customer deposit of 1.9 million. Do you have any other questions in the current report? Thank you.
I'm anxious to see our end of the year numbers, because this is the first year that I think Kate and the department heads have really sat down.
First full fiscal year, yeah.
And we're going to really have an opportunity to see how well that works out for us, and I think it's going to be excellent. Everything appears to be out there right now, so thank y'all for doing that.
Okay. Any more comments and questions? Chair, we're going to take a motion, please, on the report. So, move. Move, accept, second. You're the seconded, all in favor of signature, saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, that financial budget report has been accepted. Item nine, monthly report from city manager.
Mayor and Commissioners, I accept all the reports from all the different departments, and I have put it together to make the state of the city that is do, that is available on the first of the month and online, and everything else you have in your packet.
Any questions, how about the city manager? Item 10, special reports from other city departments or committees, if that's possible.
Mayor and Commissioners, I just don't want to mention on the wastewater, I heard today from the rural development that the state has accepted our application, and it is going to Washington, D.C., not a full, not a full review, just a financial review, which I'm hoping is a short timeframe.
I'm hoping it stays natural.
Yes, but it is going to Washington, D.C., and we gave them everything they needed to get that sent off today.
Very good.
It's progress.
Very good.
Long overdue progress.
Certainly is. Let's say one thing, and I spoke with the city manager some detail about this, I want to start probably next month involving the commission back more the way maybe it was done a while in this wastewater and in the water, we'll have a little bit more dialogue in it just to go back to a little...
If you don't mind giving me probably 60 days, Debbie Jo Marshall being out...
She works home, she has that mixer.
But she's a big part of that loop that we need to be looped in, so. And I, but I did sit down with her and Donnie and talk about it.
And she is...
I'm not going down and play mixer, because it's rough.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other question on that? Item number 11, can you get his comments from citizens may or may not be included, depending on the issues? Item A, orders 2018-1019, first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter II, Title 14, zoning and land use controls of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, same being the zoning orders of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning act incorporated and by rezoning 1.96 acres owned by Mike Rollin from C-3, general commercial, R-G1, general residential.
Mayor and Commissioners, this came in front of the planning commission this week, and the planning commission voted to pass this on to the commission as far as recommending the rezone. I don't know, Vice Mayor, if you want to comment on that at all, but that was the recommendation from the planning commission.
It was. What it's basically doing is this piece of property currently is being used for residential purposes and has a residential home on it. And some time ago, it was allowed to be built on commercial property, so basically what we are doing is writing wrong and getting it correct.
This is the first reading, and we're required to.
Further discussion on this? Chair, we're going to take a motion, please, from first reading.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
You're the seconded, all in favor of signature, saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, that's passed on for the read. Item B, Resolution 2018-4, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to submit a local parks and recreation fund application grant related construction of community splash pad.
Mayor and Commissioners, in your packets, it's a resolution that is required by the grant, it's basically saying that if we are successful in getting the grant, that we will come up with 37.5. We already have the in-kind donation of 37.5, and I imagine that we will raise part of that 37.5, but I'm also comfortable that we will be able to have that 37.5 in the general fund. And we need to have the resolution to go with the grant before it can get approved.
Some of you were here, maybe proceeding this starting at 5:30, we did have a public meeting on this, opportunity to speak. The Commissioners have anything you want to say about this? Go ahead, I'm going to have a motion before we, please, raise a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approved this.
Motion to approve, second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, we'll talk about the situation as it goes before we have our vote. We'll start on this end, so the CD and Jack, it's a quest, the chief's in favor of this. Is that certain, her property, as long as it's any, Commissioners? You want back to address, again, your comments.
I just feel that it's not the splash pad, and I think the students done a great job in putting it in, and we're, they're neglecting another part of town. Mount Pleasant is supposed to be the reinvention of Mount Pleasant, but we're not reinventing this thing, the black folks of Mount Pleasant. I can't vote for it. I can't see kids having nothing to do, some after some of them getting in trouble. And my goal is to get something on that park to occupy the kids, because you were at your five, six, seven, at 13, I can walk across town to this school over here, and a lot of kids don't have parents that bring them, a fire, I have to stand by it. That park up there has gone to waste. The city put that side of town in city limits to get that park, and then it went up there and tore everything down that was there. There's nothing up there. It's not fair to the community or the kids. Neither the people of the homeowners, which has depreciated their property taxes, their property values, not taxes, values.
All right. I'll make my statement from my part. Okay. I'd like to say about the public hearing, Mount Pleasant, you well know, it has financial problems, really a gigantic sewer problem that's drained us dry. I have fiduciary responsibility, as long as these other four Commissioners own things. I guess I finally convinced myself to support this project because of the fact we're doing something positive nature to go forward, even though we're, the 37.5 wouldn't be a start for the correction or anything. I know it starts somewhere, but many things, but I'm confident of this $37,500 that the city will be obligated to pay, that we can get some donations on that from some of the lands, in fact, I'll knock on the door and I'll do it myself. To move this forward, it gives them opportunity to show that we are trying to do something. Also, as you know, we look at all the potholes and look at all the sewer problems, we can look at a school that doesn't show that they're doing, have made progress that they've made, they've made fantastic progress in our school system the last year over here. I've never been as surprised in my life with what I've seen the Megatronics program do for our children, even if I can shock an arm, see children that never showed any interest in academics, that have stepped up to the plank and are very positively oriented. There's a long way to go with education, but we've made things there, and this will give our students an opportunity to work in projects like this, so I am going to support the project, try to make it work to the best of my ability, I don't plan on using it, and they're glad it's benefited mine.
He's carrying there, there's a little caveat in there. You can't... When it opens, bud.
Taking a little place. I did visit some, and on some of my visits around different areas, and they are very, they are very nice, some of them are very elaborate, some of them will be less elaborate even than this one, but it is something I think will be good, so that's my comments on it. Mr. Vice Chair?
I've worked very hard on it from the very beginning, and I hate that, Mr. Granberry, this is a place that I respect everybody's opinion on here, but if you look at the five-year plan that we've worked on for the parks and all the parks have been included, and we just approved the community garden over there in Grudging Park, which may not seem like much, but it's going to draw people there. When you look at buses to drop the kids off at school, the majority of our kids don't look within walking distance anyway, so we've looked into the trolley of providing transportation to there, to and from there, and for supervision and that, that was the location, and the property was free, and as Thomas said, in the development of it, it's all secure, we don't have to put that money into making sure it's level and surfaced and those sort of things, which helped in the grant. I just think it's a great thing. The young lady didn't go into, it's just not the Megatronics program that's over there, the art department, the construction department, the shop, the ag department over there with their, all the schools, the kids are involved in. It's really, really great thing that's going on over there, and I think it's just the enthusiasm that's generated in the fact to bring it, and as I was telling the mayor before, I respect the sidewalk thing greatly, and one of the things I've looked at is when you apply for a sidewalk grant, they look and say, "What have you put into your community? What has your government put into your community?" Dollars. And this will show dollars we've put into our community for our youth, and they're stickler to that, all those little numbers. And y'all, I don't know, but those kids did those maps on their own, and I was there with them, I don't know how they did it, but they do those things, so I just think it's going to be a great opportunity for our kids, and I'm 100% supportive. And I hope you all, and Mayor May go out on there, I will, so I'll be out there on this. There's no age limit on that.
Park.
There's that park. I won't go with the climate thing, I'll just walk.
Mr. White?
Quick check it.
I'm absolutely for it. I think that if you look, and Commissioner Granberry, I'm sorry, we somewhat disagree on this, I think this is positive for our whole community, not just one section, because everybody will be able to use it. It was interesting today, in my events of the day, there were two different young ladies of whom I don't have a clue who they were. One lived in Brace, which is right outside of Summertown, and the other lived in Summertown, and asked me, "What did I think of the splash pad?" And it kind of caught me off guard that they would know about a splash pad that was going in Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, that they do, and that we're totally for it. So, in my view, it's something that will help all of our community. It's, I've made this comment to others, where else in the world could we go spend $37,500 and get the marketing and the positive attitude that can come out of this? You can't, guys, go try to buy it. You can't buy it. So, for those reasons, I'm absolutely for it.
We've all expressed our opinions, at this time, the chair will undertake a motion on this particular resolution.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
You did it right. You did it right.
I did this thing right.
Okay.
We'll need a roll call, I do want a roll call, please.
Mr. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Blakeney-Chip?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Carries four to one.
Got that resolution has passed at this sprint. Your Mr. Kenny will truth us all to prize at what's going on, he'll track that up.
Mm-hmm.
Item C, Resolution 2018-5, a resolution questioning and endorsing that the Mount Pleasant Regional Planning Commission be permitted to remove its authority as a regional planning commission.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is another thing that was discussed at the planning commission meeting on Tuesday night, it's something that's been discussed for quite a while now, and I'll let Vice Mayor chime in, the chair of the planning commission, but basically the general consensus was we need to concentrate on our planning issues, zoning issues within the city limits and not outside of the town. Anybody else that wants to come in on that?
Very well spoken, that was, that's our focus, we think we need to be more air-mindedly focused on what we're doing inside our city limits versus what they may be doing in the edge of Lawrence County and Jost County, some of those areas down there. What was very unique about the vote at the planning commission level, the two gentlemen that are members from what would, as our urban growth boundary, have both supported this, both spoke more vocally about why we should go to this than anybody else did, from their own experiences, frankly.
I want to address this, too. My previous experience with public Chapter 1101 had been nothing but negative, and that's what brought this about. There's, you know, planning commission was simply like a saucer, set it down over your city hall, and you had five miles jurisdiction around that. Influent wisdom of the state legislature in 2000, 2001, they passed public Chapter 1101, which gave the cities an opportunity to supposedly diligently produce a growth plan for the next 20 years. Most cities were very hollish, they were not realistic, Mount Pleasant was included. We have our growth planning goes all the way to the top of Rockdale Hill. 2001, this is 2018, I don't think we've gotten anywhere close in the last 17 years. So, we recommend that, I recommend very strongly that we do this, the planning commission, very agreeable to do in it, give a free up, my planning and zoning department to concentrate on the area inside Mount Pleasant. I know we have three county commissioners here tonight, and welcome all three of you here, ready? Mr. Reddy? Mr. Of course, our own commissioner here at where, Mr. Roddy, you leave?
Here.
Hey, moved on me, I can't. Commissioner Cooper. We've all dealt with this, you know, we've got problems. Spring Hill opted out of it first. They went out in about two thousand and four. Columbia went out just after I retired from there. We had problems because things were not being collected here for the county. And this body, this planning commission, did not have the authority, the zoning property. They could go and approve plans, but then they couldn't change the zoning. Only the county could do that. So we're gonna give this back to the county as a gift of Christmas. Deliver it back to you. You will function much better with it because it will stop this thing. We actually lost letters of credit, City of Columbia, this is not being critical of City of Columbia, because Mount Pleasant makes the marriage too. But actually lost letters of credit, allowed them to expire. And when you're ready to build the road, that letter of credit was gone. You couldn't make that... And our roads were presented, had to step up and eat a lot of things. So it will be a benefit to the county. I promise you that. Raise your motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Right, if you'd debate, there's a second?
There's a second.
You second, further discussion? On the paper six five, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Looked it also. The resolution has passed, and we're gonna deliver that, I hope, tomorrow.
We are, yes.
Expect trip to Nashville, anybody wants to ride? Okay, item D, Resolution Two Zero One Eight Dash Six, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to participate in the Poos James L. Richardson Driver Safety Matching Grant Program.
Mayor and commissioners, the TML offers a couple of grant opportunities each year, and we are able to get this one. And then we are purchasing backup cameras for the fire department vehicles, the fire trucks. And we just need the commission to approve that, and we're moving forward with getting the grant. And our portion of it, we've actually received two in the past. We had one in front of you in fall of...
September, right?
September, okay, fall of two thousand seventeen. And the two of those together are over four thousand dollars, and our match is two thousand. This one here is just twelve hundred.
So is it restricted to the fire department?
No, sir. It was open to all departments.
Yeah, we each had to pick a project.
So it's strictly driver training, driver safety?
It's driver safety.
It's not related to fast, to emergency drive?
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. Like the grant we got in September, we got flash in lights for state vehicles, and I think cones for the street department. So we spread the...
Spread the love.
We had a third grant we applied for, and we did not get it. And that was to put cameras in the community center. So hopefully next year, we can at least get that grant.
I thought if there was anything we needed, backup cameras over the fire truck.
If they came with it, they got it.
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made, accept. Second? Second? Due to second, you know, we started discussing. On the paper six five, saying aye. Resolution Two Zero One Eight Dash Six has passed. Item E, Resolution Two Zero One Eight Dash Seven, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to execute a quitclaim deed with restrictions and reversionary clause transferring two tracts of real property located on Bluegrass Avenue, Murray County, Tennessee, construction of the General Sessions Part Two Court Action.
Mayor and commissioners, we've been talking about this for quite a while, but this resolution and its attachment of a quitclaim deed actually be two plots of land right there at Bluegrass and Olive for the construction of the General Sessions Two courtroom. And I've sent you all the drawings, and many people have seen it in the newspaper. And we wanted to include just some restrictive covenants so we could have some control over the building materials, even though I believe that what we've all seen, it's gonna be brick, and it's gonna be a wonderful addition to Mount Pleasant, and it addresses all of our safety issues, which is so important. And then the only other thing is if it doesn't move forward as a courtroom, then it would revert back to the city and to the donation.
This time, I'm going to allow Commissioner, County Commissioner Eric Pruvity to come forward and address this issue and sign up in the public comment section, and we'd like to have a state during while that's here. Thank you for coming, all three of you.
Thank you, Mayor Bailey, and council members. My name is Eric Pruvity. I'm currently the District Two, one of the two District Two Commissioners, serving Murray County. I serve southern part of Columbia. I'm also the chairman of the Building Committee for the County Commission for last year and this year. Which y'all know, we've gone through a long process, and Mary Bailey can tell you, this has really been a long process, decades for problems that we've had with Part Two Court in Mount Pleasant. And I come, and I wanted to thank the city of Mount Pleasant for working with us, especially Kate Collier, the professionalism that we've had. You know, we know that we have problems. A year ago, I was able to bring the commissioners down to firsthand see what was going on with Part Two. And then we had to go through the process of, you know, what did we want to do? Do we want to try to change the private act to bring Part Two back to Columbia? That was voted down no, so then that leads you to the next option. Okay, do we want to renovate the building that we had? That wasn't gonna be cost effective, so the answer to that was no. The next option was, okay, do we want to find an empty building and renovate it and do that? Upon the mayor doing a search for that, the answer to that ended up being no. So that left the last option. Well, if we're staying, we're building. So I thank the city of Mount Pleasant for working with us and helping us with this. I know y'all, I don't know if you've not seen it or not, but there's some preliminary drawings as to what's going on. And I think this is gonna be a great benefit to the city of Mount Pleasant, and it's also gonna be a great benefit to the county in general as far as safety, for all the citizens that will use the court services, and safety for the employees there as well. So I do, and I thank you for your time and allowing me to speak. And like I said, you acknowledge the other commissioners. We have Daniel Cooper, and we also have Commissioner Roddy here. So again, thank you for your service and what you do for us, and I look forward to this process done.
I will thank all three of you, and the other twenty-two that supported it. It's certain it's a well-needed thing that's gonna save somebody's life in a dangerous situation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all the work you put into it. It was the last totally minimum in years.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you as well. This is great for everybody who's concerned in this. And there's a lot of people that have touched that piece.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
One of you, or two other gentlemen, he signed up, but I'll say it's time for all three of you to...
Well, no, I speak for myself on the matter.
Come up. Yes, sir, come up.
I'm Daniel Cooper. I'm County Commissioner. This thing, it went through a lot of back and forth, a lot of talk about how Glenn Cherry... Cherry Glenn, really. Anyway, I don't know what it was. We had so much to talk about, and it seems like nothing, the Duster Board's done very well. We had a lot of nights. This lady, Miss Granberry, came quite a bit, and came down and expressed her opinion. But really, thank y'all very much for the property, because that was kind of a sticking point, because we understand how sometimes memorandums of understanding, there's always a conflict. But we thank y'all, and we're moving forward to trying to get this courthouse done as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, step forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
How y'all doing? I've never seen you before. I would like to take the opportunity to thank you, the commissioners, for helping us do this. We did target this back and forth and decided on the location. This city manager, this Collier, she helped out. So anytime that this represents two and a half billion dollars, it's gonna be a fine building. It's not very often that we who do the county out of anything, but we who do the Mr. Davis. We got the lens, so we're afraid of that, Mr. Davis. And a lot of commissioners do support this, support Mount Pleasant. And if you know Jim, we do support Mount Pleasant. We wanted to grow, we wanted to continue to grow. And the biggest factor we had is with Cherry Glenn. And as a county representative, we... I push for Cherry Glenn. I think Cherry Glenn is a very potential thing for our future. And I want... We got two buildings out there now, four, and we got a program going where we're gonna bring another building on and continue on. Once we sell one, we're gonna move to another. This highway coming in from Hornwall, coming from Lawrenceburg, coming from Jost County, that is spearheaded right here at Cherry Glenn. So there's great potential there, and I think we should take advantage of it. And again, it's a fine court for us, and we thank y'all very much. Y'all really helped us. Thank you.
It was a joint venture and had to be done together. Appreciate it very much.
If anybody... I've got pictures of what's going across the street with the courthouse, so you're gonna see a tremendous growth on that side of town, a lot of investment of money there. I'm happy to show it to anybody after the meeting.
Mayor, I know it's sort of a joint venture, but I know these county commissioners, so they think... Truly, we thank y'all.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, please.
All right. The motion has been due to be made and seconded, that we pass this resolution, Two Zero One Eight Dash Seven. Now we call the local police. On the paper six five, saying aye. I would like to sound that resolution has passed. Thank everybody that contributed to that. Item F, whether to enforce the collection of city dueling of real property taxes, authorizing the city attorney to file a lawsuit with Chancery Co. on or before April first, two thousand nineteen.
Mayor and commissioners, City Attorney Cory Jones moving forward on our dealing with real property taxes. And we just wanted to have in the record a vote to move forward. Cory, do you want to add anything to that?
We've already put notes in the paper that we intend to do file a lawsuit, but the deadline for filing it is April the first, which would really be, I think, ending the twenty-ninth or thirtieth, because it's Good Friday in Easter. So we're ready to go.
Just wanted a motion passed by the commission to move forward on that.
Chair will entertain that motion, please.
Motion to accept is presented.
Accept as presented is second. Due to second, further discussion? On the paper six five, I'm saying aye. I would like to sound the city attorney before the commission to file that lawsuit. Item eleven G, the one that was put on, a wave of the rules. Honestly, I've never gotten it straight, you three county commissioners. I called the recorder county clerk. I called the ordinances, I called them resolution. And now I've just got to call a wave of the rules by suspension.
You'll get it.
Old habits are hard to break. This time, I would... I guess I should read this.
The caption, please.
Something is, since it was, I'll play it to it. Resolution Two Zero One Eight Dash Eight, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee requesting that the Murray County representatives to the State General Assembly uphold legislation that removes local authority of a local governing body to regulate design and development standards for development within the corporate limits. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, through its Minnesota Planning Code subdivision regulation, design guideline protects property values and the quality of life for its residents and property owners. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant has spent considerable time and effort engaging the public, business, and development community to create, evaluate, codify, and periodically modify these various codes and regulations with respect to their purpose of development within the corporate limits. And whereas the city of Mount Pleasant values the belief that all communities should have the prerogative to establish design standards that fit the character and desire of their respective uniquely municipalities, now therefore be resolved by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. The Murray County Representatives, the General Assembly, are hereby requested to uphold any legislation that removes the authority of a local governing body to regulate and design development standards within their respective corporate limits.
And Mayor and commissioners, this has come up in meetings that we've had with Spring Hill in Columbia with the Murray Alliance, because apparently the state is trying to regulate more of what we can and can't do within our community. So that's been something that Spring Hill is presenting to their mayor and board of Alderman as well.
The state continues to sell out the city's and the county's right to regulate their own things. And if we build up in the House by now, that AT&amp;T is pushed, trying to find out who was behind it, it became their attention about four months, three, four months ago, to the association out of Knoxville, which our city recorder was good enough to bring our attention. Where AT&amp;T, who's been four years getting rid of the old franchise thing where they would have to go into every county in Tennessee to get permission to do the things that they're doing and not doing. Now they're behind a bill that will put these mini cell towers in the lightaway, in the public lightaway. And you have nothing to do about it. You get paid thirty-five bucks, and they put them where they want to. And you know, we got a lot of committees that gone putting their power underground to make their business, to make their cities and their counties look good. And the state's trying to take all of it away from you folks. Big Ben has taught a big thing, and quite some of our legislators in Nashville are not paying attention to the losses of their constituents. They're letting big money come in and do what you want to do. And AT&amp;T is very rare power. That's why we've asked this be put on, and I don't know if that legislature will be adjourned shortly. Any questions?
I think the AT&amp;T thing's the one that kind of rattled me. They want to put their cell towers.
It's just the first of many, you know. We want to see if that one gets passed, then there'll be another one.
You know, this is just a thing to try and do. The Chair will entertain a motion, please, to do this.
I'll make that motion. Mayor?
Second, all right, further discussion? On the paper six five, saying aye. I would like to sound we'll get that up there. You can email it up.
We'll get that tomorrow, too.
That one you go with him.
It's fine.
Yes, it's fine.
That actually concludes our regular agenda. This time, item twelve is general comments from citizens. It is limited in time and number of comments. We have one, two individuals, Virginia Thompson, Shane Morton, seven sixty-five Redwood Circle, that asked to address this commission about a problem that they have in their subdivision. At this time, you're just gonna have one speaker, or you're gonna have two. You both can come up together. If you would, when you get here, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Shane Morton. Live at seven sixty-five Redwood Circle.
I'm Virginia Thompson, and I live at seven sixty-five Redwood Circle as well.
We've had an issue with water in our house. And we've had forty people in our house, from engineers to Mr. Bailey, who says come and seen the mess. We pumped six million gallons of water right out from under our house.
It's a year and a half old, too, and new construction.
And we've been told this, we've been told that. First of all, the ditches, when this subdivision was built, are not deep enough. To me, that falls back on the city. Ms. Collier told the third-party investigator, whatever. But there's a lot of things going on with this, and people's changed stories, things have disappeared, this, that, the other. I'm just gonna let you know, we're not gonna stop pursuing this. And we have talked to a lawyer. I don't know if you're familiar with deannexing from the city, but we pay city and county taxes, so we can deannex from the city if we get the whole subdivision to do that. And forty percent of the subdivision, or forty houses in that subdivision, said they would deannex from the city of Mount Pleasant. I don't know if you understand what that means. You're gonna lose about a hundred thousand dollars if we can deannex. And it's all because you don't want to help the citizens paying. We pay, and you tell me that you don't know anything about our house, you didn't know this, you didn't know that. But we moved in in August, and we got a tax bill in November. So it went from whatever a property is paying for taxes to paying for a two-hundred thousand dollar house. So that's, I'm sure the taxes are a lot different. And you tell me you don't know anything about my house.
The water has been so bad, ladies especially imagine a year and a half old house that you can't even take a shower in. We've turned the water on, got wet, turned the water off, soaked up, turned the water back on to rinse off. Just last week, flushed in the toilets, water backing up in the shower. It's ridiculous. And we're, somebody somewhere has got the wisdom to us and help us.
We're not gonna stop. We have talked to the TVI, and we are... We have talked to the TVI and we are gonna talk to the FBI.
When Redwood was originally built, it was not in city management. So, city had, I mean, I, I, I'm not, wait, wait.
This was built in 2016.
Our house, not the subdivision.
Okay, excuse me.
When Redwood was originally built, it was not in city management.
Right.
It was county property.
Right.
When county built Redwood, they knew that it was just like I was talking about their park, it was Trump area. They still called it the end, but it's always been. But the city is inheriting that property. Because the city did not put some houses there.
Right.
Or permit to put some houses there. It was, it was county, I've been here all my life.
Right. I understand that.
I understand what you're saying. So, I mean, I don't know, I haven't been told about it, so I, I.
Any of you are welcome to talk to us, Flanger, hit our cell phones, come to our house, come like yourself.
Well, I know, I know Johnny Armstrong and my family, they have a problem. I always came up, they had a problem with a tree. I came up there, looked at it, just can't hang it down, took a whole lot of help in no time. But I mean, it's something, I understand what you're saying, but it's something that I think that the city would have to look at to see what would have to be done.
Right.
There's been a claim filed with the city's insurance company and they did not reclaim it, they said there's a, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know how to say this, but it's a statute of limitations that prevents, that it's an immunity to keep them from being responsible for any wrongdoing.
But, but I understand what you're saying, but, but in 2016, that was the city.
Yeah.
And it should not ever pass code. It, it, May 10, 2010, the floods, all these floods happened. So, in codes, it should have never passed code, though.
We have a picture of our neighbor's property, which is higher than ours, that was totally underwater in 2010 and obviously we didn't know that. Totally underwater.
Now, now, are the citizens not supposed to?
2010, I'm sorry, 2010, when the flood.
2010 house did that.
The one right beside me that has a culvert issue with the driveway.
That was all underwater.
And you know, they're higher than we are. Completely underwater.
We will continue to, to look at it, as I told y'all. If you feel that you have to have legal rights, that's certainly understand it.
Yeah.
You gotta be with, with the legal system.
I encourage y'all, we'd be to drive by there.
Yeah, surely we would.
Some, some of them that live on that, they're strange.
They have a real problem, there's no question about it, they have a problem there.
They have problems.
But my, my, my thing is.
All around town where they have problems, you know.
I would, but I'm, I'm familiar with your situation, I have driven by it, you don't know it.
Right, oh, you don't have a white truck?
I have a.
We've had a lot of people drive by.
I got, I got some trucks.
Okay, okay.
And I would encourage you to pursue this through TVI and FBI.
That's what we're, that's what we're doing.
Because I'm aware of a lot what has been.
It really can't be discussed at this time.
Exactly.
I am too.
I am very, very cautious in what I say.
Exactly.
Because I've got our attorney sitting here, but I would encourage you to continue to do that.
Right.
Because I am aware of a whole lot of things that have gone on with the district.
And we're not, we're not, we're not trying to say it's all the city's fault, but.
Exactly, well, somebody.
The mic is back, it's like, it was annexed, so we're looking at a subdivision that was built and developed by somebody else.
1977.
By somebody else. I have good friends that lived in it, that was built by somebody else, so, and it was annexed into the city. So, all that was there before. It's like, it's like Bill Fitts, there are things that need to go on that we, we don't need to discuss because of liability with that, but to take that situation and appreciate it.
It's just, you know, we have a $200,000 house that we're not gonna be able to sell, that we're gonna have foundations cracking in a year, two years, three years. And it's just terrible to have to think about that in the back of your mind. And like I said, I, I didn't even wash laundry there for five weeks. I was at the Mount Pleasant laundry mat, giving them money for five weeks.
But, but my thing, not, I'm not saying for me, shouldn't codes stop a lot of this?
It depends upon where you go with it and, and timeframe with that. And, and not saying that, because, because whatever we say here is just going.
I mean, I'm not asking.
But you know that.
But I'm just saying.
It truly depends on where, when it was and the timeframe and, and responsibility and what you end up looking at.
Right, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, you have.
If it was flooded, I mean, I'm not gonna do that, but if that was flooded right in 2012, then that should have been a flood plain.
Right.
Exactly, and my insurance company doesn't want to help because it wasn't a flood plain and water coming from the sky or coming up from the ground is considered flood. And so, we, we just are in trouble.
And it, and it all depends too, the structure around it. If that weren't flood plains before, now because of this, the structure around it, all of a sudden become a flood plain because people built around it.
We're, we're in a little bowl that we didn't realize. And we've got the neighbors across the street that are higher, there's underground water that's about 30 inches down, it's coming straight to us. The neighbors behind us are, the neighbors beside us are, and more importantly, we found out that all the street water is dumping on us, too.
But let me ask you this, and I'll make it real short, sweet. 82 people, 82 families are moving into this area, Middleton City, every day. Just say you get 50 of them move to Mount Pleasant and they have this, this issue. Mount Pleasant has such bad publicity right now, do you want the publicity that it would create that, look, here's a city that keeps passing stuff in a flood zone. You see what I'm saying?
You've already made an assumption, so you're gonna have to go that legally. You've made assumption here and none of us have said, yes, that's a flood zone. So, you're asking us to say something?
No, I'm not asking, I'm just, I'm staying.
Keep playing, playing to our attention.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm listening to your attention, that's all. I'm not asking for, for a response. I'm just saying, Mount Pleasant doesn't, we like Mount Pleasant, it doesn't need the publicity.
We love our house, we love where it's at, we just hate our water issues. I lived in Columbia my entire life and, and we've enjoyed living here except for the last quarter of a month.
You're always ready to come in and speak and.
We've been in the community center several times, from Mr. Kenny here for benefits and stuff.
But we won't ignore it, we're not ignoring it.
Yeah, I would say this, this commission does not ignore.
I started to call each other individually, but I just.
Can't say that we can follow, but we do talk and we do try to work together and.
I can assure you that our city manager will be getting some phone calls.
But, you know, I mean, I will just tell you, just bring that honestly, a couple weeks ago, we did a benefit for a gentleman at the community center, got some, raised $10,000. And half the people come from Mount Pleasant, so, Mount Pleasant's a great community. You know, we're, we're not saying anything bad about Mount, we love Mount Pleasant.
Congratulations, very good, I've enjoyed speaking with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're here, we're here for all the plans, so that's always good.
Thanks for letting us speak.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is all that has signed up. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, it was a good meeting and we will.
I just want to mention that I've got two conferences to go to in April, one's the Tennessee City Managers Association and the other's the Rural Development. Neither of them break my contract.
Sorry, are they all 500 bucks?
I can go.
You can't go.
So, I have second week of April and third week of April.
Chamber meeting is Thursday night, if you have a major.
Yes, it's there.
What's your my question?
I am.
I am.
Okay, chair will entertain a motion in the jar, please. So, move. Wait a second, begin in the jar. Thank you. Thank everyone for today.